Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, August 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the City Council to order and ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tammer, call the roll, please.
Park?
Here.
Nudera?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Nardini?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Erby?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Verimus?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Shenko?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. And to item three, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone that has a written communication that would like to deliver to the City Council? If so, please raise your hand. There being none, we move on to public forum. Clerk, has anyone signed in for public forum this evening?
Nobody has signed in, Mayor.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that did not have the opportunity to sign in for public forum that would like the opportunity to do so now? All right. We move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tammer, please read the consent agenda. I'm sorry, announcements skipped over there. Are there any announcements from the dais this evening? All right. Now we're on to the consent agenda, and if you would read the consent agenda, please.
Minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on August 7th, 2023. Accounts payable, 6.2 accounts payable, August 21st, 2023, $1,614,743. Sorry, $1,614,743.11. 6.3 report, license agreement with Phase 3 Brewing, Spring Road Garbage Enclosure. See item 8.1. 6.4 report, Elmhurst University Homecoming and Black Party. 6.5 report, Knights of Columbus Car Show. 6.6 report, purchase of lift station pumps for North Elmhurst Sanitary Lift Station. 6.7 report, 2023 Storm Sewer Linings Project, change order number one, York I-290 Linings Edition. 6.8 report, Water Reclamation Facility Bundle Number Four Project, Contract Amendment Number Three. 6.9 report, 2024 Sanitary Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation Project, Design Engineering. 6.10 report, 2024 Stoom Sewer Televising Project, Design Engineering. 6.11 report, 2023 City Hall Camera Project. 6.12, an ordinance amending Section 3.02, entitled City Manager, and 3.20, entitled Bidding and Contract Procedures of Chapter 3, entitled City Administration of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. 6.13, an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the deaccession of disposal and disposal of the surplus property from the Elmhurst History Museum. 6.14, a resolution adopting the City of Elmhurst amended purchasing policy. 6.15, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Metropolitan Family Services DuPage. And 6.16, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Elmhurst School District 205 in connection with the emergency siren located at York High School.
Thank you, Clerk Tammer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove either to vote against or for further discussion? Alderman Bram?
6.3.
6.3. One else? I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 6.3. Alderman Hill with a motion. Alderman Brennan with a second. Clerk Tammer?
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, zero absent.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, zero absent. The consent agenda minus item 6.3 is approved. Clerk Tammer, on 6.3, please read the report.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Development Planning and Zoning Committee that the City Council approve the license agreement with Phase 3 Brewing with the term conditions as described above and suspend with the rules to allow the necessary license agreement as prepared by the city attorney to be approved by the City Council at the same meeting. Signed by Alderman Marty Deuter, Chair; Alderman Jennifer Verimus, Vice Chair; and Alderman Tina Park.
Thank you. May I have a motion to bring item 6.3 before the council? Motion, Alderman Deuter. Second, Alderman Verimus. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is coming out of the Development Planning and Zoning Committee. It is our recommendation that the city enter into an agreement with Phase 3 Brewing, which is a soon-to-open business on Spring Road. The agreement would allow Phase 3 Brewing to place their trash enclosure in an unused corner of the city-owned parking lot that surrounds the building. The report also recommends that the rules be suspended because this business is opening very soon and because they have contractors on site who are finishing the construction of the restaurant itself and can perform the build-out. So this, you know, we look at this as a benefit to both the city and the business. The benefit to the business is that by locating their trash enclosure off-site, they have the opportunity to have more seating on their patio. More seating on their patio is expected to generate more revenue. The benefit to the city is that if the business is generating more revenue, then the city will receive more sales tax revenue. So we see this as a benefit to both parties, the city, and really coming at no cost to the city. The city will continue to own the land that the enclosure is constructed on, and we have an opportunity to end the agreement if we should need to or want to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. I agree with, well, first, I'll thank the committee for their work on this, and I agree with Alderman Deuter's comments in regards to it is a benefit to the city. It, as proposed, in theory, it should generate more sales tax dollars for the city, which incrementally, the city will see additional revenue. But I also want to make a point that it's also a benefit to the business owners themselves because they wouldn't be able to build what they have built today, or at least it wouldn't be as pleasant having trash receptacles by their outdoor patio area. As the Public Works Committee knows, we're debating or discussing right-of-way vacations, and I know this is not a right-of-way vacation, but this is city property, and city property is an asset. Like all assets, I think there's a value to that asset, albeit they're not purchasing it, it's not an easement, it is a license agreement, it is for their use and their benefit. So the biggest point and concern that I have with this report is it is being provided to this business at no value. I look forward for this business to open up. I look forward to the additional sales tax dollars. I hope to visit here frequently, but because my philosophy has always been in my 20 years of being elected, that a city asset should never be given away or utilized without a non-zero value, I cannot support this report. The other point in the matter is the, just the general use of suspension of rules. I know we do it for city issues when there's an urgent issue that needs to be done. This suspension of rules, in my opinion, is for the benefit of a business, not for city government, not to make sure that our waste treatment plan is continuing to be up and operational. This is for the benefit of only one entity, and that entity is this business. So for these two reasons, I will not be supporting this report or the license agreement later in the agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Bram. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind the council of a couple things. One, this is a corner of the parking lot that currently is not used at all. I think we'd be having a different discussion if this were parking spaces that could no longer be utilized, that clearly has a benefit to the city and a cost associated with it. This is the corner of the parking lot where spaces come together, and you can think of it as where you might have a lazy Susan in your kitchen, right? It's a corner that's really hard to access, and it, right now, it's completely unused. That's one piece. The other piece I just want to remind the council is that in other business districts, we have designated TIF district. Through that TIF district, we have the opportunity to offer businesses retail grants, which is up to $10,000, to incentivize the business. We also do facade grants and some life safety improvements that are significantly higher amount. I'd say those are times where we are giving away the city's resources, and it's really hard to calculate the return on those resources. Here, we have an opportunity for no cost to the city to make this land available. We're not losing ownership of it, and we can pretty directly see the increase in income that could come because they're going to have the additional seating. I think, pretty sure that Phase 3 said that it would be about eight additional seats that they can put on their patio, and they estimated that revenue would be $86,000 to them. We didn't dig into that. We didn't make our decision based on, you know, realizing that $86,000, but that's their calculation for what us allowing this unused space is, means to them, and from that, we generate the sales tax. Thank you.
Alderman Brennan, and then Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'm in full support for the report as written. I do have a question. There was mention in a letter, you know, from Phase 3 Brewing, talking about docks potentially leveraging this space as well. So if that is indeed the case, I certainly, and I don't know how that benefits them other than, you know, using that space, or they also going to get some additional benefit if they're able to use this, this corner, the unused parking lot. I'm sorry.
Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a great question. I think it was Phase 3's hope that this would be a joint project with docks, that they can both benefit from. Docks is in a similar position where, right now, they have their garbage enclosure on their patio. So I think Phase 3 thought, great, we can do this together. It would decrease their costs if they were sharing the cost of the construction of the enclosure. Docks decided that this time that they would not like to do that, as Phase, the Phase 3 representative who came to the committee thought they're maybe just feeling it out, seeing how it goes, seeing how the relationship goes between the businesses before they, you know, would enter into that. I think it's staff's perspective that if another business were interested in joining, that we'd have to enter an agreement with them as well, but it's something Phase 3 is very interested in doing, and I think it's of great benefit. The more people who use it, the better. We have fewer garbage trucks going through, you know, making their individual stops through the alley. Lots of benefits to it. So I hope that we can see more of this, not just with this garbage enclosure, but I'll just add, anybody who's driven through the doughnut hole will see that that entire space is littered with trash receptacles. I'd love to see consolidation there. I'll plant that seed, but I think what we're doing here is something that makes a lot of sense and could potentially be done in other places as well.
I have one follow-on comment. So, thank you for that. And the other point that I'd like to make is that I live on the south side of Elmhurst. I think this is a great project and very excited about them opening. They have had challenges with supply chain and getting certain, you know, appliances, et cetera, to actually open up. So I'm in full support of suspending the rules to move this forward so they can benefit from some of the sunlight that we still have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say that I do like the idea of where the garbage enclosure has been proposed by Phase 3. I do like that idea. I think it makes a lot of sense. But to echo Alderman Bram's comments, I do think that city right-of-way, public space, city land has value, and to say that revenue generated from sales tax would, would be the benefit to the city, that's true, but in other cases where we have that happen in parklets, we recognize that that's not the only value. We charge a fee for those parklets. So I know it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but I think it's not enough to say simply we're generating more sales tax revenue is sufficient in these cases where we're enabling a business to have more outdoor dining space. The space does have a value, whether it's usable or not. You know, there are cases of other nonusable strips of land that we still assign a value to and still sell or, you know, make concessions for in whatever case, but I do agree with Alderman Bram that this has a value, although I do agree with the enclosure and the enablement of more outdoor dining spaces.
Alderman Bram?
Yes, thank you. To tail off of Alderman Hill's comments just now, excuse me, the right-of-way comparison, I think, is a very valid one. Not that it's, that's a license agreement, but for the most part, anytime a resident comes in for, to purchase a right-of-way or acquire a right-of-way, it's unused property. So it's the same one-to-one comparison as that we're talking here. You can say that this is unused property, but it is property. Property holds a value. Tonight, right before I came to City Hall, I went out there, even though the pictures did great justice, I went out to the parking lot and walked the parking lot. Coincidentally, there was a park, there was a park, there was a car parked in that spot. Even though it's not an official spot, there's no bumper, parking bumper there, there was a car parked in that spot. So every piece of property that the city owns, that the Elmhurst residents own, has a value, and I'm going to stick with that. Usable space or not, I already covered that. TIF compared to non-TIF area, the business chose to move into an area that's not a TIF. How are we taking that accountability that because it's not a TIF area, that this is the reason why we should be loaning out a city asset to one business? I like the idea of if all the businesses in the strip were able to use one location, I think that's an excellent idea, and I wouldn't have pulled the item tonight. But this is not. This is for a particular business, period. It's for the benefit of the particular business, period. Even though I love the idea, I just think that this particular business shouldn't benefit without some cost.
Alderman Toledo, then Alderman Deuter.
Thank you. I fully support this report. I think the reasoning is well thought out, as the chair noted. I would add for consideration that public land is not the city's land. Public land is the residents and the property owner's land within the city of Elmhurst, and this business is contributing towards property taxes. They have rights to public spaces, and it's not that the business is getting a unfair use of said property. The business is investing their own dollars to make a win-win situation for both the business, possibly other businesses in that direct vicinity, as well as make it a more enjoyable public space for all residents. Thank you.
Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to clarify two things. One, the comparison to the vacation, that is land that is no longer owned by the city. When we vacate something, this will be land that continues to be owned by the city. So the value that it holds for the city now will continue to have that value for the city, plus the increase in sales tax revenue that we expect this use to generate. That's one piece. And the second piece, just want to, we did not think that this was a good idea because there is not a TIF district. I think, you know, even if there were a TIF district, we would still, I think, I'll speak for myself, I would still support this. I brought up the TIF districts as, to make the point that we do support businesses in other areas of town. We don't have that here, but that's time where we really do take city resources and we invest in those businesses. This is something no cost to us, that we have the opportunity to support a business in the same way that we choose to in other districts through TIF resources. Thank you.
Alderman Bastido?
This might be a question for city staff, but in downtown Elmhurst, there's sidewalk space, which is public space, that we allow restaurants to use for outdoor dining, increasing their revenues and sales tax to the city, just like this situation. Do we charge them to use the sidewalks?
I believe we charge a small fee, excuse me. I believe we charge a small fee, but that's for the inspection that we have to do to go out and make sure that they're complying with ADA ordinances.
But they're allowed to use the sidewalks for free?
Generally, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Before I go to the people who've spoken, anyone who wants to weigh in before? All right. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you. Just one other point that Alderman Bastido's question made me think. I think some of what we charge for the sidewalk dining is for maintenance. We have to do a lot more, city center and the city have to do a lot more sidewalk cleaning and power washing than we do otherwise. With this enclosure, something I didn't mention before, Phase 3 is completely responsible for the build-out, the maintenance, if it needs a repair, if somebody backs into it, whatever it might be, Phase 3 is completely responsible for all the maintenance associated with it.
Alderman Hill?
Just to respond to Alderman Bastido's comments, I think it's a little different. The comparison I think we're hearing you make is that the sidewalk, it's not negated by its use for outdoor dining. It's still a usable sidewalk, so in that case, we're not obviating the use of something. We're maybe restricting it or congesting it, but I don't think in those cases it's actually restricting the use of that sidewalk. So I don't know if I would find that to be an apt comparison, although I understand what you're getting at.
Alderman Bastido?
I just want to say, that was genuine curiosity, too. I didn't know the answer. I should have known it because I used to be on the committee, you know, in which I came in front of, but it was a genuine question.
Oh. Alderman Brennan, did you have a comment?
No.
Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the comments tonight are very good constructive comments. If we ran a ledger and we tried to, like, find a who owes who or, you know, what the final situation on this with a one-year lease or a two-year lease, if we just simplified it, there's going to be a leasehold improvement by the owner or by Phase 3. So they're going to spend X amount of dollars, and that would be a leasehold improvement under a normal lease agreement, and that would have value at a closing statement or a lease agreement closing. Obviously, we're going to get, we're going to get revenue of X dollars from revenue from the extra sales. We could get extra rental, to Alderman Bram's point of the square footage. So let's just pretend there's 225 foot, and you get $10 a foot a year, so there's 2,250. I'm going to guess their leasehold improvements to build this structure are going to be greater than that, so we might be looking at a two-to-four-year period for them to break even. So I think on a one-year agreement where both, both parties can terminate, if I get it correctly, I'm willing to roll the dice on it. So I will be supporting the agreement. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Tammer to call the roll and report.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, zero absent.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, zero absent. Report 6.3 is approved. Moving on to item seven in our agenda, reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials, Mayor Levin. First of all, I was not able to attend. I think there were some aldermen that were there at the American Legion on last Saturday, August 12th, or maybe it was the Saturday before. I lost track. We were presented with this recognition award to the city. It says the members of the Elmhurst American Legion THB Post 187 are proud to present this award in recognition of the city's support of the American Legion, which has enabled us to accomplish our mission of service to veterans and our community. We honor the elected officials and city staff for their friendship and unhesitating willingness to go above and beyond to help the American Legion make a difference in our community. Our membership further appreciates the dedication and hard work required to make Elmhurst a great place to live for everyone we will always remember, presented on August 12th, 2023, at the American Legion Post, presented to each of you. I won't send it around, but it's right here. So we thank the Legion for that. Item next, we will be recognizing some Elmhurst sports teams. We seem to have a lot of talent in town in sports, so each of the teams have been contacted, and we will have them at a later meeting to extend the city's congratulations to those teams. Rock the Block is September 8th and 9th, one of my personal favorite events. It's a very, I'm sure you've all been there, but for those watching, mark that on your calendar. I want to remind everyone, school is back in session. One of our big pushes is traffic safety and compliance, so slow down, stop at the stop signs, stop at the yield signs, and obey other traffic control signals. Lastly, we had a very uniquely sad day last week when Elmhurst lost two of its finest citizens, both of whom were major contributors to our community. More than 30 years ago, when our downtown was a shadow of what it was today, Willis Johnson stepped up and upgraded the York Theater and made it what has, what served as the heart of our downtown, and he remained through the rest of his life a major leader in our community, and particularly with respect to city center and everything that was happening down there. Rich Rosenberg was also a longtime Spring Road businessman, but more importantly, he was the selfless founder of two charities here in Elmhurst. The one most known is Special Kids Day, and we just sponsored at the city or co-sponsored the event when all the kids came out and got to meet all our city departments. He was the kind of guy that didn't really ask for much in the way of recognition, but was always to help. So it's a generation from which they come, where people gave back to the community. I think they're an example for everyone in this community. I was proud to call both of those gentlemen my friend. I would speak on behalf of former mayors Markucci, DiCiani, and Morley, and probably most of the people on the council. These were people we knew, respected, and on behalf of the City Council, we extend to both of their families our condolences and appreciation for everything they've done for us. That is what I, oh, one last one. Beer Fest coming up, I think it's a week after September 8th, I'll guess, and Kathy Jordan, who could not be here today, but asked on behalf of the committee that all of you celebrity-type aldermen and city treasurer, city clerk, consider being celebrity porters at the Beer Fest. They appreciate if we come out and do that. I was out of town last year, otherwise I would have done it. It's a lot of fun. It's a good chance to meet the residents, so I hope if you're interested, contact Dave Olberg or contact Kathy Jordan.
September 16.
September 16. Thank you. City manager?
Thank you. A few items tonight, Mayor. One, I'm happy to report that Valette Street and Electric Avenue are open again. That's a week earlier than what the tollway contractors thought, so they were able to remove that crane from the work that they did, so that is open. Second, we had letters sent to residents regarding electric aggregation recently, last week. We have received a few calls here at City Hall, as we typically do, some concerned that the letter was maybe somebody trying to trick them into changing their electric supplier. I just want to remind council and anyone listening that the city website has a page with all of the sample letters on there, so if people want to compare the letters to what we have. There were five different versions that went out, so it can be confusing. Depends on where you get your electricity from. So if you want to direct residents to the webpage for more information, please do, and city staff is always happy to answer residents' questions on that. Please direct them to the finance department, and we can help them decipher exactly what it is. And then finally, I'm happy to say that the new Explore Elmhurst website is on track to launch tomorrow, so keep an eye out for that. We began working on these changes in the fall of 2022, and Cassandra and her team have been working closely with our community partners for several months to get to this stage, and it's an evolving campaign and website, and continue to work with the business community on keeping updated and accurate and relevant. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Are there any other reports from elected officials? Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to call the attention of both the council-
I wanted to take this opportunity to call the attention of both the council and members of the public to the work that has been a long time coming on the finance committee regarding finding a new revenue source for the stormwater costs that we have to pay for within the city of Elmhurst. It is the intention of the committee to make a recommendation to the full city council at our next committee meeting, so if anyone has any remaining questions or wants to provide input that the committee should take into account in our final discussion, please feel free to reach out to myself, Director Coyle. All of you have my contact information, and for members of the public, my contact information, Alderman Toledo, is on our city website. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. I'd make resolutions. Clerk Tammer, would you read resolution 8.1?
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between Phase 3 Brewing Company and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. See item 6.3.
I have a motion to put resolution 8.1 before the council. Alderman Deuter, second. Alderman Veremas. Alderman Deuter?
Nothing more to say on this. This is the final approval for the item that we discussed earlier.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Clerk Tammer, please call the roll.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Veremas?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
13 ayes, 1 nay, 0 absents.
13 ayes, 1 nay, 0 absents. Resolution 8.1 is adopted. Item 9, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion Hill, second. Alderman Schenko. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn. Thank you.